And now we'll move on to going to your next item of conduct of business, City Clerk.
Item six A, adopt resolution approving forty feet of yellow curb striping in front of five hundred and five oh eight San Mateo Avenue, forty feet of yellow curb on the north side of Angus Avenue from the end of existing red curb to forty feet westerly of the existing red curb, thirty feet westerly from San Mateo curb return to seventy feet westerly from San Mateo curb return, and twenty feet of green curb in front of five oh one San Mateo Avenue.
Okay, City Manager, or I'm going to assume who's going to be doing it, but I don't want to make that assumption. But I see you should play it again. Go ahead, please.
This presentation will be given by our city engineer, Haywan Ritchie. Haywan, please proceed.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening again. My name is Haywan Ritchie, the city city engineer. The item I have before you tonight is the request to approve various downtown loading zones on San Mateo Avenue or in around San Mateo Avenue in downtown. The objectives for tonight include providing background information on the development of the downtown loading zones, present the proposed loading zones, and recommend city council approve two-space yellow zone loading zone, yellow loading zone at five hundred and five oh eight San Mateo Avenue, two-space yellow loading zone on north side of Angus Avenue at near six hundred San Mateo Avenue, and one-space green zone at five oh one San Mateo Avenue. This map shows approximate vicinity locations of San Mateo Avenue in downtown, so this would be between El Camino and Huntington. This slide provides some background information regarding San Mateo Avenue. San Mateo Avenue is an archilla roadway. The speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour, one lane in each direction, and a generally north-south direction with parking on both sides and the solid double yellow center line. There's two-hour parking limit from eight AM to six PM except Sundays and holidays. Double parking was identified as an issue, and I would like to know that they're looking at the history of collisions. We did not see a history of collisions that appear related to vehicles stopped in travel lane or on driving on the wrong side of the road. So, loading zones were mentioned in two planning documents. The first is the downtown parking study adopted in 2019. This planning study recommend, or the study recommended temporary loading zones in front of businesses with heavy drop-off for afternoons, collectivities. And also in 2019, the San Mateo Avenue conceptual street skate plan was adopted. This particular plan recommended white curb in front of La Patey Belene, and I would like to note that this item went before city council in November of 2020. There were also, this plan also recommended three yellow curb loading zones widely spaced apart along the street. The item before you tonight is two yellow zones and one green zone. So I would like to take a minute to describe what yellow, green, and white zones signify. These are from our municipal code section seven point sixteen point zero two zero for curb markings. Yellow means no stopping, standing for any purpose other than loading or unloading of passengers or materials, passengers for three minutes and materials for twenty minutes. Green curb means no stopping, standing, or parking for a period longer than twenty-four minutes from nine AM to six PM except Sundays and holidays. And a white zone is no stopping, standing, or parking for any purpose other than loading or unloading of passengers or depositing mail not to exceed three minutes. And I would like to include that yellow and white zones, the hours are seven AM to six PM from, except Sundays and holidays. So the original item that went before TSPC back in December of 2020 included very alternate locations, some of which are brought before you tonight. Those include by in front of five oh one and five oh eight San Mateo Avenue. So these were the locations previously proposed to TSPC. There's La Patey Belene at four thirty-four again, city council who had in November of 2020, in front of four fifty-three here in front of the Teamsters Union, forty feet of yellow zone were proposed. And just to clarify, forty feet is approximately two parking spaces because each parking space is approximately twenty feet. And then moving further east, so five hundred and five oh eight San Mateo Avenue in front of Hanlin and Dreams Hair and Beauty Salon, there was forty feet of yellow zone proposed, in front of the Starbucks, twenty feet of green zone, and in the six hundred block, in front of six eighty-one and six eighty-five, which is the Ninja Sushi and Star Performer Salon, forty feet of yellow zone. And so the original proposal did propose three locations widely spread apart along San Mateo Avenue to alleviate issues with double parking. Sorry, I think I skipped a slide there. So I, we, after we went to TSPC, we did receive input from TSPC, and what we have before you tonight is a proposal to city council that takes into consideration of TSPC's input. So now the proposed locations in city council, this one at Belene has already been approved. Five oh one, five oh eight, and five hundred remain unchanged. The location on the six hundred block was moved to the north side of Angus, near six hundred San Mateo Avenue, near the Grand Leader. This site recommends forty feet of yellow zone on Angus Avenue. These are street views of the various zones. So on the top pair, you have five hundred and five oh eight San Mateo Avenue, forty feet of yellow zone. It's near the end of the block. There's the first two stalls in the bay. There is parking in the back. In five hundred and five hundred and one San Mateo Avenue, we have the Starbucks and one-space green zone. And then next to Grand Leader, there's a two-space yellow zone near the end of the block on Angus Avenue. The outreach that staff had done, this was in 2020, actually just prior to the pandemic, staff went door-to-door to all the businesses, really made an attempt to contact all the businesses in person, and then when that, if that did not work, then we tried calling them by phone, and if that also didn't work, we left a door hanger. And so extensive outreach was performed in downtown regarding these. For the, I also would like to note that there was an evaluation done, taken prior to TSPC. We evaluated the locations based on the special parking restriction policy, safety and legal considerations, as well as our municipal code. So the loading zone benefits include reducing instances of double parking resulting in blocked traffic, encouraging faster turnover, and most businesses were supportive, except a few had concerns about removal of general parking purposes, parking purpose, parking spaces. The staff recommendation includes approving forty feet of yellow curb in front of five hundred and five oh eight San Mateo Avenue from seven AM to six PM except Sundays and holidays, approving forty feet of yellow curb on the north side of Angus Avenue at six hundred San Mateo Avenue from seven AM to six PM except Sundays and holidays, and approving twenty feet of green curb in front of five hundred and one Silven, sorry, San Mateo Avenue, nine AM to six PM except Sundays and holidays. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Haywan, for the report. Questions from colleagues?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, do we have some public comment?
Not at this time, but we can start, and we'll see if anybody comes in.
Yeah, I, it was my understanding that two of the business owners were going to be speaking this evening, and I know one of them had trouble getting into the meeting.
Okay. But. I was going to say if they're interested, they can raise their hand, but you have the floor for now.
Sure, I'm willing to, I'm willing to hold my comments until if they had an opportunity.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, it must be the season, you ask and you have received. There are two hands from the public that have raised up, and so why don't we go ahead in case they want to give their comments and then take care of business or what they may have. Anybody else who wants to speak on the topic from the community, please go ahead and raise your hand now. I see that there are two speakers.
Yes, we have Mike Carso. Just one moment, I'm bringing you into the room.
Right, so we have two speakers, and after the two speakers, we're going to close that off and bring it back to council.
Hi, Mike, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. As I understand it from tonight, that on Angus Avenue, we're stated to get a yellow loading unloading zone, which is not what we requested or need. We really need a green zone, a twenty-four-minute green zone for customer turnover, for people to come in, grab their sandwich, cross a shop, across pretty much across the street, and move on. There's parking behind my building for trucks to load and unload, and we don't really have a problem with trucks double parking to load and unload. What we really need down there is a green zone, so I would like for you to reconsider removing the yellow zone and putting a green zone instead of the yellow zone. I would appreciate your consideration for that.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, you guys have a great evening, appreciate your time.
You as well.
Thank you, and next we have Max Wayne. Max, one moment, I'm trying to bring you in the room. Max, you're currently muted, I'm trying to unmute you. Hi, Max, can you hear us?
Okay, I'm here, I'm here right now, can you guys hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and believe me or not, me and Mike did not coordinate, but we have a similar concern. Concern is that yellow pickup zones are normally for the commercial vehicle, and it, people are reluctant to park on this because they are afraid to then get the ticket, but if we have a green zone or a green area where people can come and pick it up, same thing with goes with, because my area where I am, six, sorry, Atlas and Nury, six-three-two and six-three-seven, a lot of people, they come from Uber or DoorDash and they pick up and go. So the yellow zone, they will not be able to park. That's same concern what I have, which Mike has, so that would be my suggestion to have convert them into green zone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, thank you for being here. And I see that is the second and last speaker, so we're going to bring it back to the city council, and if you don't mind, Vice Mayor, I'll, I'll start with you. You're on mute.
I'm mute, there it is.
No worries.
Excellent, yes, yes. These three locations, so I, I agree with, with the, with the location by Grand Leader, there, he does have a loading zone, and I think at the TSPC, there might have just been a little confusion between the intent of the green zone and the yellow zone. Because they, they're able to manage to, to load up his store, as he said. The intent there is to provide an area that people can come in quickly, get what they want, and leave. So that takes care of that one location. What I, what I, what I'm going to say next is, is my observations of being downtown quite a bit, and the yellow zone at five hundred and five oh eight San Mateo Avenue, I, I'm going to say it's not really needed because there is plenty of parking and loading in the back. What, what prompted a lot of this, I believe, is, is how we have a number of businesses that are karate or, or judo lessons and the swim school where we have drop-offs and parents are wanting to drop their kids off, of course, as close to the business as possible, so they double park. And putting additional loading and loading zones in front of those businesses, I think would be very helpful. So I, I, I'm not convinced yet to support the loading zone at Hanlin. I would propose that at Starbucks, instead of having one twenty-foot parking space for people to pick up their coffee or go into other businesses, that you would extend that to two spaces. And I think this is a good step as, as we're seeing this food delivery business take off, there's, I was in society, and they have a, their counter has five spots for five different vendors of delivery. So that need for people that want to get their food picked up by these businesses and delivered, or even people who just want to pick up, as we're coming out of COVID, I think there's still going to be people that are, are going to be a little bit reluctant to want to go into a restaurant. So having more green zones and if potentially changing the green zone, and I'm municipal code from twenty-four minutes to twelve, that, that doesn't happen, doesn't have to happen tonight, but I think we should look into that to be able to get that turnover of customers in our downtown, because parking is, is, is quite difficult to obtain. So those are my comments for the, for the time being. Thank you.
Councilor Mason.
Yeah, thank you. So I had a couple of questions. The first one's actually a comment, just really excited to see in the report that this is part of the street skate plan, and you know, finally, little parts of it are coming to fruition, so very exciting. I did want to ask if there's any reason that one cannot unload on a green zone? So as long as they're within their twenty-four minutes as opposed to the thirty-minute yellow zone, is there any reason one can't unload in the green zone?
I'm not sure legally if that's, but I think there may be a conflict of intent, so if you have vehicles that are parking and who are really passengers looking to park and quickly run into a shop and come back out, and then having loading activities at that same location, that may not be the best of activities to happen at the same spot. I did speak with our traffic engineer and our consultant traffic engineer, and it sounded like, at least in agencies he's been in, loading did not happen, or material loading, I should say, did not happen. I'm not sure if there is a legal argument that that can't happen, though.
Okay. I can't tell if the city manager wants to say something or not. No, okay. Okay, yeah, because I, I would just say if there's not, then you know, why not go with the green, the green loading zone, I mean, the green zone that could be used for loading. My other question is whether these, so when we've talked about COVID and the city streamlining a number of processes for business, one of them was around the ability to, for businesses to have parklets. And so will these spaces given up impact businesses that could get parklets at a later time?
So if we have the loading zone areas, I suppose the benefit of having those loading zones in those spots would be diminished because they would be taken by a parklet. That's not to preclude parklets from occurring on San Mateo Avenue. It may just reduce the benefit of the loading zones at these particular locations where they would be installed, however.
Okay.
City Manager, could you hold on, please? Councilmember Mason, I'd like you to conclude with your other questions, please.
Yeah, so, so that one can be answered, and then along with that, because it's tied, they are kind of tied together. Going back to the number of arguments that were given when the street closures happened, there were, I think it was, I don't remember if it was council members or staff, but that were concerned about the, you know, the jewelry repair shop that people could, wanted to park right in front because it was safer for them. I think we had other businesses who stated that they wanted to make sure they were visual. So I'm just thinking of those same arguments when you have a loading zone where you're inviting big trucks to go in front of a business, and maybe they're not as visible, or you're taking a, you know, a location that could be closer to that jewelry shop. And I'm just thinking aesthetically, I know you're, you're looking at this practically, but aesthetically, as we move towards meeting our street skate plan, I do get concerned that we're taking spaces that could later be parklets, I get concerned that it might be somewhat unsightly on our main street, and I'm not quite sure why we're not doing more loading zones on the sides and on the parking lots that we own that go directly into the back shop of some of these locations. Thank you.
Thanks, Haywan, and City Manager.
Councilmember Mason, let me address your prior question and expound upon our city engineers' comments. So this will not preclude a business from requesting a parklet. These zones are intended to be complementary and help the businesses. And so if a business that has a loading zone in front of them wishes, desires to put a parklet there, staff will analyze that. We will not just say, no, there's a loading zone, you can't have a parklet. So we'll analyze it, and the recommendation may be to eliminate the loading zone and allow the business to install a parklet or relocate the loading zone. If that happens because the city council authorized, then we will come back to the city council for relocation or elimination of that loading zone. With regard to your other questions largely, why are loading zones not placed on the side streets as a sort of immediate preference, as well as why is there not dedicated space in our rear parking lots for loading? I'll turn that over to the, to the city engineer, but, but first I'll say a couple things. Where there is the sort of easy ability to have a loading zone, be it a yellow or a green passenger zone on a side street, we did recommend that. And so, for example, Grand Leader, that is on Angus, there's the desire now to move it from a yellow to a green zone, staff does not, we don't recommend to give that, we totally understand the business's position in that, that converting from a yellow to a green, absolutely. The other businesses, though, there's not a clear location for there to be a loading zone on the side street, and so that's why it is on San Mateo App. And what we did hear from the businesses is that they do want that easy access for their customers that mainly access their business through San Mateo App to likely be able to pull up, have a loading zone right in front of the business and be able to go in. There, we, there are no locations proposed, actually, I guess there's only one, the Hanlin location where there is a rear parking lot where that loading or passenger loading can occur. And so that is the only location that I think fits your question. And so I'll turn it over to the city engineer to expound upon why that Hanlin spot was recommended.
Yes, so the original locations were meant to be wide, spread wide apart, and so they were in the four hundred, five hundred, and the six hundred block. And the plan had noted that there was blocking of the travel lane from vehicles that were double parking, and some of the activities were the unloading of materials. I spoke with the business owner of the beauty salon today, and she anecdotally said, oh yeah, you know, there's the grocery store next to me, and they load, and she's seen that activity, and so she, she was not opposed to it whatsoever for my conversation, and she confirmed that she was not opposed to it when she spoke with staff last year. And so this seems to be there's some need with the grocery store being at that location, and it's, it was mid-block, sorry, it was in the middle of downtown evenly spaced between the other yellow loading zones. And vehicles will tend to drive down San Mateo Avenue and, you know, may take convenience and double park if they don't see a loading zone, and really, it's meant to allow for the free travel in, on San Mateo Avenue. They may not make the effort to, you know, go around the block and utilize the side, a loading zone on the side street.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. So you, my comments are mostly about the Hanlin location. I'm, I'm also supportive of, of having the Angus zone be, be green and not yellow. The, for the Hanlin location, and I had sent, and I had sent this question in advance and was, received the answer just prior to the meeting about going around the corner onto, onto Silven, and putting the, putting the, the loading zone there next adjacent to the laundromat. We can't, you can't go directly next to Hanlin on the side, similarly to what happened, to what we're doing at Grand Leader, because the travel, the, the travel lane is there, and there's no parking on that side of the street. But the, adjacent to the laundromat directly across the street, the laundromat has a parking, has a parking lot behind it, Hanlin has a parking lot behind it. It's troubling to hear that, that deliveries to the grocery store are blocking San Mateo Avenue currently, when not only is there a lot behind the grocery store, there's an entrance from the back of the grocery store. And so why, why they wouldn't take their deliveries through the back makes no sense, and I would, I don't think we should approach the, approach the, the store owner to tell them that that's what should happen with their deliveries to their, to their business. Or if that, if there's other, for whatever reasons, then they can, they could utilize a loading zone, which is, would be two, two doors down, and across one very narrow street of Silven, adjacent to the laundromat. It just seems to make more sense to me because parking is at such a premium in our downtown, and the, my, my understanding of the, the intent of the, of putting in zones was to increase turnover and make sure that we don't have cars that are parked and just taking up, taking up space all day. Also, also will be addressed with meters at some point, but the, you know, getting that, getting that turnover was, was the, was the goal. And I'm concerned with the, having two loading zone spaces in front of Hanlin, that those spaces are going to be empty most of the day, and not be, not, and not be available for, for the customers to those businesses.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. You know, the comments I'm hearing, they definitely make sense, and, and I know that the limited parking is definitely a concern, but I, I think, you know, it sounded, it sounds to me like the, the bigger issue is the safety aspect of having trucks double parked on San Mateo Avenue, and that's, that is the busiest street, and that's where trucks do tend to stop, you know, regardless of where they're, whether there's better places for them, they do tend to do that, and you know, plenty of times I've been, you know, stuck behind trucks trying to get down there, and so, you know, I'm definitely in favor of adding a few loading zones, I'm hoping that's going to help alleviate some of that, and, you know, increase the safety. It sounds like staff is in favor of the changing the color of the, the Grand Leader one. It seems like there is a little bit of overlap in the colors, green, yellow, white, you know, there, there's some overlap in what's allowed, and you know how much time is allowed in each one. So hopefully the, you know, the, the average person won't be turned off by a color and think that they're not going to be able to park because there's, there's a, a color there. I know our ability to enforce is also limited, you know, whether something's a, a twelve-minute or twenty-four-minute, I, I don't think we're, anyone's going to be standing there counting minutes and issuing tickets, and so there, there is some flexibility in it. It, it becomes more of a visual reminder for people to know that, you know, don't, don't just park there and then stay the whole afternoon, just, you know, take care of your business and move on, and hopefully it will have that effect. And I know that we're also looking longer term at potential bringing in some parking meters, which will also help with the turnover, so I know that's a project for, for the future, but I think this is a good step, definitely in favor of moving forward with some of this striping.
Yeah, for myself, it is a premium, and I think the green makes more sense on Angus than the yellow personally. And I think we, we heard from somebody that already had said why that makes sense, and, and I think, again, that, that's where the need is, and that's where again, that's where the need is, and that's where you want some turnover. But I think what would be helpful for people to hear, too, is how did it come up with these locations? I know I'm probably going to be said, well, they're kind of centered, but there's another market, maybe on the block, that goes more south or what have you, that they'd say, well, why isn't it there? Because those trucks always double park at that market. They don't use the back lot either, which goes to Councilmember Hamilton's comment of, you know, maybe some businesses say you have these options, which most of the businesses don't. And so it's, as you know, it depends what time of the day, but there's a lot of frustration, I think, that folks have trying to go around a double parked truck. If they have this lot in the back, that should be the nice, respectful thing to do, but then why did we determine these locations rather than also where another market is that has these same issues?
Yes, and so the original locations, I believe, were spread somewhat, trying to be equidistant throughout downtown, and there was consideration to how a truck might access the spot. So I know the item wasn't before you tonight, but for instance, the Teamsters, it is right next, it would be right next, would have been right next to a driveway, and so it would have allowed for easier access of the truck rather than having to try to pull into a tighter location. So the corners, there was some evaluation with the geometry and trying to ease, to make the utilization of the loading spaces a little bit easier. And I think the guidance was from the streetscape plan, which recommended two spaces, two yellow curb spaces, spread widely throughout the downtown. And I believe that's where it had come from, and also in speaking with the business owners and not hearing, you know, too many objections with where it was being proposed.
I think it was just, was good for folks to hear that, because I'm sure if you ask various folks, they'll say, well, I think you need one here, or you need one there. Let's go to Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to follow up with the comment that you made. Down by Genevin at 480 San Mateo Avenue, there is a Market Hawaiian Barbecue, and there is no loading in the back. And that's where I frequently see a double parked car, a double parked truck. I appreciate the attempt to, the idea that the zone should be spread out, but it doesn't fit our downtown as well, because it's, our downtown's unique where there are storefronts that have no back loading area, and it's a grocery store. So where are they going to park? So I, and without really knowing our downtown, someone could just miss that, and I think at that location, it was missed. But that's not what's on this agenda right now. I think this is a good effort to move forward, to get things done in response to the concerns. At some point, maybe later on, we tweak it some more. And I did submit some questions, and I did get a response that individual business owners could request cones and an encroachment permit to kind of deal with that. So I will go back to the Hanlin location. I've never seen a Mahikana Market deliver to San Mateo Avenue, because I just never seen it, and I'm there quite often. They have a huge parking lot in the back. So I think that would be a mistake, and I hope my colleagues also agree with that. More green is needed. Loading isn't needed there.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I would just recommend outreach to the business owners on where the loading and unloading options are, a letter or something along those lines, like a notification. And then also just our ticketing. Why, I mean, if the double parking, which has been mentioned a couple of times today, I mean, if you're going to do a loading and unloading zone for 30 minutes, then that's a hefty amount of time to be able to ticket somebody. So I really encourage our city team to be ticketing those double parkers that are loading, unloading, and disrupting traffic in our downtown.
Yeah, and again, the rationale for my question, it was also I wanted folks to hear, because I'm getting those questions, why here, not there. And I will say that I have seen on San Mateo Avenue, folks walking the street, actually chalking and sighting vehicles if needed, but I have seen that now twice. So just as an FYI. Okay, is there any other comments? This is a action item. It is a resolution. There has been some discussions about, obviously, some changes. I'm kind of hearing, I think, from everyone on the concurrence of the yellow to the green on Angus. I've not heard one person say no, but I do want to go to the city manager, and he maybe want to wrap it all up for us, so we're all on the same page.
Sure. Councilmembers, it is concurrent with the staff's recommendation, with the exception of converting the proposed yellow zone along Angus near 500 San Mateo Avenue to a green zone, in conversation around potentially eliminating the proposed yellow zone in front of 500 and 508 San Mateo Avenue, closest to the Hanlin restaurant. I have not heard a decision or a majority of council in favor of either keeping it or taking that recommendation out. So I would ask for clarity on that point.
Perfect. On that clarification, I think I know where the vice mayor is on that, from my other colleagues.
Talking about 500 and 508?
Yes.
I don't think we should move ahead with the yellow zone there. I think we should study either moving it around the corner onto Sylvan or moving it somewhere else.
Councilmember Salazar, is your mic on?
I'm going to say I want to stay with staff's recommendation, and I do think we need those loading zones somewhere, and there might be a better place for them, but absent knowing where those might be, I believe we should still move forward with creating some zones. So I'm in favor of keeping that one.
Councilmember Mason?
I wonder if we can meet in the middle, get to yes with making it green. I do agree, I don't see a lot of traffic down there all the time. I don't see a lot of loading and unloading in front of Hanlin. So I would, I think I'd be okay with a green zone if the other council members are amenable to it.
I would support a green zone there over yellow.
I have my opinion, but I would say not at this time, but that's me, but Vice Mayor?
I'm definitely in favor of green instead of yellow, but for that location, we're only talking about the Hanlin location at this moment.
You're correct.
So I would say green. It's across the street from Starbucks. I think there'll be plenty of people that'll pop in and pop out. So, and as Councilmember Mason mentioned, somebody could, well, I don't see anybody ever unloading there, so I just don't see it really ever being needed. So I'll be quiet now, I'll move forward.
Okay, well, I'm hearing consensus of a majority to no yellow, but then consideration of green, and I'm hearing consensus of a green, or a majority of a green. If everyone's in concurrence, city manager, does that help clear that up? Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. So in addition to the coloring of the curb, is there going to be any stenciling or signage that identifies what those zones are intended for?
That would be determined during the work order. I apologize right now, I'm blanking on whether we typically put up signs for loading zones. I believe we are putting one up for a table lane. Signs should be in coordination or in addition to the curb marking. We have our traffic engineer on the line. I wonder if we can bring him in and help him answer that question?
Let's bring him in, because I'd have the Councilmember Salazar, too. I mean, we've got to notify with the minutes and be clear somehow.
And also, my other concern is that, you know, if it's just painting the curb, it's a relatively small expense, but if we start putting up signs, the expense starts going up. And so if we're going to make changes from the dais to, based on something that's already been studied, I would prefer that we not make those changes and rather go back, study it, make sure that we're going to actually have the same benefit or an equal benefit before we commit to a bigger, more permanent expense.
And conference room, as, so city manager?
Oh, if the city engineer or the traffic engineer is not coming in, I can confirm that typically for a green zone, there's not a sign that's put up, but there's stenciling along the green zone, typically in white, that denotes the time limit, and there are typically not signs for yellow zones, given that it's commonly understood what a yellow zone means. There are more often signs for white zones, but, and we are putting a white zone at La Pati, so that may explain that.
And our consultant traffic engineer, Said Pakri, is in the room?
Good evening. I think, I still don't have the video, but I just say that generally, although in the vehicle code, California vehicle code and city codes, it's an explanation of the color of the curb, but for general public, it's always a good practice, and all cities do that, and they add additional signs. And you mentioned also some variation of green curb. If you want to change it from 24 minutes, then you have to amend the code to allow that, but also you can clarify it with signs. So we always, it's a good practice to add signs, too.
So what I've heard is it's not required to have the signs, because I think the council member was, you know, if it doesn't work, and then the cost of taking out the sign and what have you. The Muni code is what allows us to set parameters, but we have the code now, so that is what it is. We can't just change it tonight. So does that answer your question, Councilmember Salazar?
Sort of. It sounds like we should put up signs, but for this decision, we're not planning on putting up signs, and so we have some flexibility then to change. That's what I'm hearing.
Yes, and typically, the decision to put up signs is housed with staff, and so what I can say is, we don't have to decide that tonight and make that a part of this. You can simply decide on the zones, and staff will develop an appropriate notification, be that stenciling of a pavement color or placing of signs, and then we may adjust over time if needed.
Okay. And so then, I would want to hear from staff that changing those colors, it's not going to significantly minimize the impact of what we're trying to do, and if we can still accomplish what we set out to do with green versus yellow, then I'm in favor of changing the colors.
Thank you. I think if we take an incremental approach, that is something that we can try, and there is also ability to add additional loading zones as businesses identify. We would like to take that to the noticing and take that to the TSPC before we did that, but, you know, there are additional opportunities on the 600 block and on the 400 block as well, and specifically in front of Hanlin. If we have the poll in place, if it is determined that the green zone doesn't work, we could take that before council again to amend that.
Okay.
And I've heard good feedback as well as to other locations that we should consider in our next round. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Just quickly going back to the question about signage for loading zones. I've seen, I don't know if I've seen it in San Bruno or not, I don't know exactly where I've seen it, but I've seen yellow curbs that have red stenciling on them, saying loading zone, and what the time is, similar to what we do with white stenciling on green curbs. So that's always an option as well.
Is everyone and city manager, are we still good on where we're going with this with the resolution making some modifications?
Yes, so just to be clear, it is changing the, going with staff's recommendation, with the exception of changing the yellow curb recommendation along Angus, closest to 600 San Mateo Ave, from yellow to green. And it is also changing the recommendation for a 40-foot yellow zone in front of 500 and 508 San Mateo Avenue to green. And there was also conversation around looking at potentially adding loading zones, if a loading zone in front of the other grocery store in the 400 block, I believe. So staff will look at that subsequently.
Does everybody understand the modifications of the resolution? All right, this is an action item. I'm asking for a second. I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, I'm going to take my hand down. I just did. Any consideration of why would there only be one space next to Starbucks, which has a higher amount of people wanting to go in and out quickly compared to the Hanlin store or the hair salon?
I believe initially, the loading zones were yellow to accommodate trucks, and this passenger zone, the green zone would be more than likely a passenger vehicle, which could utilize a single space more easily. And so I think that was the thought behind the two spaces for the yellow loading zones and then one for the green zone.
Right, and I, okay, I understand that. I'm thinking just one space in front of Starbucks is when you could have two, there's actually three spaces there. So providing a couple of spaces that get people to go in and out, pop in and not double park, I think that would be more beneficial than even doing anything on the Hanlin side. Just for, if we're really talking about doing something from the dais, just for my colleagues to consider that, you know.
Through the mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I was, I'm less concerned about that if we're going to be approving two green zone spaces directly across the street. I don't think we necessarily need two in front of Starbucks and two more greens directly across the street in front of Hanlin. I think that's, I think the three combined spaces that are very, very close to Starbucks would be, is going to be.
Right. And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
My question is, doesn't it make more sense? I mean, there's really no reason in my mind that why we would have green over on Hanlin when it's more of a need at Starbucks. If you're going to have two spaces, I would put it at Starbucks and do nothing at the Hanlin side.
Well, but also cars come in different directions, too.
You know, that's a great point, Mr. Mayor. I stand corrected.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? If not, I think the city manager has articulated to us a couple of times. I think we're all understanding the resolution. Is there any action from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as amended, with changing the yellows to greens.
I will second.
Motion, Salazar, second. Hamilton, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you, staff.